The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting this evening. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2019, 7:00 PM. I will ask that everybody stand for the pledge and Councilwoman Tompkins will lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our meeting. We have a fall house tonight. This is one of the more fun events that the town council gets to be a part of. This evening, we are going to be announcing the fire poster contest winners. And with that, I am going to turn this portion of the meeting over to our Fire Marshal, Larry Sutherland. Larry? Hello.
Town Council, Town Manager. Thanks for having us here tonight for doing this event once again. I think this is like the 30th, 50th year for the poster contest. We take the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade posters from all the students. We judge them. And what they do is promote fire safety. And hopefully, they take this experience and learn from it and take it through their life to hopefully prevent fires and injuries. So tonight, from the Tofflon School, Chief Kevin Tonner is going to hand the posters back with envelope. From Tofflon School, we have Grade 4 Anita Consalvo.
Yay, Anita.
We're going to just stand up here and line up until all the winners come up.
They're in order, aren't they? That is yours.
Take your time. We're here all night, Larry. Well, hopefully, not all night. Not all night. But, you know, take your time. Take your time. Take your time. We're just going to take a few moments here until we have our pictures in order.
Tofflon School, Grade 4 Matthew Fantozzi. Grade 5 Hayden Cooney. Grade 5 Brian Goulet. Grade 5 Anila Karanovic. Linus Tree School, Grade 4, I'm sorry, Grade 5 Harley Danton. Grade 4 Madison Lanita. Grade 5 Anila Karanovic. Linus Tree School, Grade 4, I'm sorry, Grade 5 Harley Danton. Wheeler School, Grade 4 Courtney Thorpe. Now, these are all the standard winners in the contest. We have two first-place winners. One from Linus Tree School, Grade 4 Brooke Mailer. And Grade 5 from Wheeler School, Chase Busselé. So tonight's winners are receive a gift card for AMC Theater. The 12 regular winners get a two-card pass and the two first-placed get a three-card pass. They had a calendar and so forth. You know, we certainly like to thank everybody, the art teachers and high school, the elementary school principals and art teachers for participation in this event every year. I'd like to see all the kids take their posters and show the audience. And then we're going to turn around 180 degrees and show the Town Council, if you could. It's on the other side of the box, Kevin. He look for his poster? It's on the other side of the box. Yep.
Can we see them too?
Yes. Yeah, they go turn around. Okay. Show the audience your posters, please, and then turn around and everybody can get a look, good look at those. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all the winners. I don't know if you have a school tomorrow. I just spoke to Superintendent. He said 4 o'clock tomorrow he'll make a decision. So you still want to get to bed early tonight. But thank you very much. I appreciate all your, all your great helping work. And take the smoke detectors home. When the parents have homework, put the smoke detector up and make sure it works. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming here tonight and showing us your artwork. That is, that's a job well done. And I want you to thank your teachers who helped you participate in this. We certainly have some future artists in Plainville. That's for certain. We'll certainly be happy to have the parents and children stay for the rest of our very exciting meeting. However, we do understand it's a school night. So having said that, we'll take a brief recess. If you need to go, we can, we can have that happen. But thank you all very much again for participating every year in this very important event, not only to create some beautiful art, but to educate your families about fire safety and things we should be thinking of, not just at this time of the year, but all year round. So thank you again for coming tonight. Okay, I think we're all set. We'll resume with the rest of our agenda. Thank you all for who, for those of you who came here this evening for the presentation. But we will be moving on. We do not have a public hearing. So I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 2nd, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I attended meetings of the three groups to which I'm the liaison last week. And just a quick highlight from one of them, Committee on Aging. The final report on the Thanksgiving dinners was actually 90. That includes both dinners at the center as well as those that were home-delivered. And as of last Thursday, 50 folks were signed up for Christmas. So that continues to be a longstanding tradition that is carried out by, chiefly by volunteers from the community. It's really amazing.
Mm-hmm. Great. Does anybody else have anything to add? I would just like to mention that on Friday, I attended the downtown merchants' tree-lighting ceremony at the firehouse. The weather prevented the event from taking place outdoors as it normally does. But we, we managed to fit all inside the firehouse, for which we thank the fire company for making that arrangement. Santa came. The lights went on. We had a very nice time. And many thanks to, again, to the downtown merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, our Fire Department, our Police Department, anybody involved in the planning and execution of the annual event. The children love it and the families seem to have a good time. So it was, once again, a success. If there are no other reports tonight, we'll move on to appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to acknowledge the fire company's elected officers for 2020 and recognize Fire Company Captain David Massey and Lieutenants William Gammon, John Misca, Thomas Machini Jr., Douglas Markorelli as officers of the Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Congratulations to all, once again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint incumbent Jennifer Bartis Early for Capitol Region Council of Governments Regional Planning Commission for the time period of 1120 to 1230, 120.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any other appointments this evening? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's it.
No, I have two. I have down here.
Okay. You want to make those?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to appoint regular members Jennifer Bartis Early and William Reche for Planning and Zoning Commission, effective 12, 2020 to 12, 24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve for alternate member for planning and zoning, Juliana Ramia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any others?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for those. Board of Education, Lee is on. The board is having their monthly meeting this evening as we speak, so we will not have a report at this point in time. So moving on, report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Onto the Town Manager's report. Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. I do have several items. The first of which is a memorandum of understanding with SMA Realty. At their November 21st meeting, the Economic Development Agency unanimously voted to recommend a three-year, 30% tax abatement for building renovation and implementation of a manufacturing facility at 10 Spark Street. The property is owned by SMA Realty LLC. SMA recently renovated a 24,000-square-foot building and the surrounding site. SMA has also relocated four small manufacturing companies to Plainville. An MOU has been reviewed by the Town Attorney for Town Council consideration. And there is an item in the new business that would approve and authorize the Town Manager to execute an MOU with SMA Realty LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Next item I have is a health district update. Plainville joined with the Town of Southington to form a regional health district in 2010. Last year, the Regional Board of Health accepted the Town of Middlefield as the third member of the district. At their meeting held last week, the board voted to lower the per capita for its member towns. The per capita fee is the charge used to determine the amount each town would pay for the health district services. The per capita fee has remained constant since 2011 at $6.75 per resident. The board unanimously voted to reduce the per capita fee to $6,065, coupled with a slight decrease in population in Plainville compared to last year, which is minus 82 residents. This reduction in the assessment in next year's budget is somewhere around $1,800. While this is a relatively small amount, the overall budget stability with the health district, in my opinion, is commendable. It's held the line since 2011 and in fact, a slight decrease going into next year. I serve on the health board, so I think I made the motion to reduce it. So anyhow, anyhow, hopefully, we can do the same next year. The next item I have is the unassigned fund balance policy discussion. The Town Council has discussed establishing an unassigned fund balance policy. A fund balance policy sets the goals for fund balance that should be retained by a municipality. A policy could also include a strategy for how fund balances should be used in the event that we exceed that goal. Financial institutions and rating agencies such as Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's look favorably on those municipalities that establish a clear and concise fund balance policy. Such a policy also informs town residents the reasons to maintain a fund balance and the options for how an excess should be used. In your meeting information packages are examples of fund balance policies that have been adopted in Farmington, Simsbury, Bloomfield, Watertown, and Bethel. And there's others out there, but we gave you five. If desired, town staff can develop a policy for Town Council discussion and consideration at a future meeting. If you had an opportunity to look at some of the fund balance policies, you see that they're, you know, all are a little bit different and, you know, approach it in a little different fashion. And we could either, staff can bring back a recommendation. If some council members want to work with us to develop it, that's fine as well, whatever your pleasure may be.
Just a quick question. We don't have a formal policy written at this point, which is why we're perhaps maybe going to do that. Now, have you experienced that that has been a negative in terms of when we go out? I mean, we've gotten some very good ratings from the rating agencies such as Moody's and whoever else looks at our, you know, financial condition. Have we yet to have a problem because we don't have a written policy or is this just another?
You know, it's really hard.
Supportive thing that might help at some point or not, really?
When we, when we look to get a rating, and we will be looking to do that for the springtime when we looking for permanent borrowing of the Wheeler School, you know, the final leg of the Wheeler School project, we have an interview and a discussion with Standard &amp; Poor's. So they interview us. And one of the first questions they ask us is, has the town established a fund balance policy? And our answer to date has been, no, we haven't. But, you know, informally, the council is usually looking in this particular area. I'm not sure that that is as, is assuring to them as having a formal policy. We've been, you know, so, so in talking to our financial advisors, specifically Barry Benabi, he has recommended that, you know, while it's not required, it certainly wouldn't hurt. And I think it helps to codify what I think the Town Council has, has kind of done in practice, informally, over the last, say, seven or eight years.
So it hasn't been a negative that we don't have a formal, as you said. It's just...
Well, it's hard to say. We're AA+ or one step under AAA. Would that make the difference or not? It's hard to tell.
Well, some of that has to do with the size of Plainville, its economic condition, its, you know, land value, values of all of what take comes in. So we are different than some Simsbury or Avon, for example. You know, the value of all of our property is different, which may be come into play when they go to get theirs. But certainly, they need to be in good financial standing in order to, to have those AAA ratings. I mean, I don't, I, I'm not objecting to looking at a policy, per se. How enforceable is it? For example, if this council puts in a policy, does that mean some future council can say, well, it's a policy, but we really need to do this and kind of start wandering outside of that?
Policies, policies certainly can be changed.
Yeah.
So if another Town Council came in and said, we wanted to change the policy to reflect, you know, our, our feelings about it, they certainly, it adds the flexibility to do that. But it, but it certainly educates future Town Council members, gives you, you know, gives future members a, at least a position statement that a previous council took, you know, depending upon how long ago that was. And it also gives the residents, you know, the, you know, something that's down in writing that they can count on as far as, as far as, you know, how the council handles, you know, unassigned fund balances.
Thank you.
Sure. So would you prefer for us to come back with, Town Staff, to come back with a recommendation or?
I'll be for my colleagues.
I mean, I'd like to help out. I think we should look at this. I'd be happy to be one of the two or three council members who give you some feedback, if that's okay with everyone. Sure.
I would support moving forth with developing a policy.
Okay.
I think it, I think it sets some guidelines. And, you know, it's not carved in stone forever, but it does set some guidelines and would be helpful in decision-making. I certainly think we've been responsible in terms of the unassigned fund balance. But I think it'd be good to have guidelines, you know.
I agree. I definitely would like to see a policy. And if you need somebody to help, I'm certainly, make myself available for that.
Okay. Down at this end, you're all good to look at.
Yeah, definitely like the idea of it. And I agree with the fact that it'll really help give our citizens an idea of exactly what we want to do with our fund balance and where it's going to be going.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. I'm just, I was concerned earlier that someone could potentially use it to say, well, you know, we're, we're lower than what we, what we want to be, so we need to send out a bigger tax bill or whatever. But I don't think that situation would happen, right? It would still be, it's a policy. It's not something that we have to do. We don't have to have it at a certain point. And if we dip below that, it's not like we're going to go to the taxpayers looking to, looking for more money, right, Robert?
Well, I wouldn't think so.
Unless you write it in the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, emergencies can happen where all of a sudden, there's something emergent that's of a large, big number, like a failure of some building or a failure of a major system in a building, that if we have to dip into our fund balance and it does go below the 10% or 12% or 14%, I'm sure we could be held harmless for that. And then at some point, try to be, you know, try to get it back to where we hope it would be. So if that happened, we certainly wouldn't be jeopardizing anything in the town if something of an emergency showed up, right?
Yeah, no, not at all.
All right, thank you.
If you look at the Watertown policy, it states if they fall below their minimum threshold, they'll do everything in their power to restore. So it's not like we've got to take immediate action. They give themselves a two-year window. So I think as long as we keep these ideas in mind that there's ways to responsibly rebuild to where we feel is a comfortable level, you know.
Okay. Dave?
We just have to remember it's a policy and it can be changed at any time, any place and any council, depending upon what the problems are for the town and the people at the town.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems that, you know, your, your marching orders, if you want to call it, that would be to, over the next months or however, whatever timeframe you want to put on that, to put together a sample for us to take a look at. And those, the ones I looked at certainly were, seemed to be, make some sense, but tailor it to Plainville and come up with the thoughts that we probably might have already.
Yeah, my goal would be to have something in place, if the council was to have, adopt something, to have it in place in anticipation of our next rating, which would be in the spring. So sometimes now and then, hopefully, have something that's acceptable to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item I have, and I'm, and I'm sorry to talk about this this evening, but it's, it's Christmas tree disposal? Well, actually, I'll go to Christmas tree disposal and then go back to Town Council, Board of Joint Meeting, since I brought it up. And the reason why we're bringing that up this evening is because the next time we have a council meeting, it'd be a short period in terms of informing people. But the Town Roadways Department will collect Christmas trees during the week of January 13th to 17th. Residents are asked to please leave the trees at the curb before January 13th, as the roadways department will only be making one pass through the town. Residents are asked to make sure that the trees are free of ice and snow and are not placed in the road or blocking sidewalks or driveways. Residents could also drop Christmas trees at the transfer station beginning on December 26th. Transfer station is located at the end of Granger Lane. There will be a designated area to leave the trees. Please remove any transport bags when dropping trees at the transfer station. We will be getting that out on, on social media as well as press releases, but just early warning with regards to, or early notification with regards to Christmas tree disposal. I know people ask us all the time, so certainly around this time of the year. Next item I have is the Town Council Board of Education Joint Budget Meeting. The traditional joint meeting between the Town Council and the Board of Education to discuss the budget expectations for the next fiscal year is scheduled for Tuesday, January 7th, beginning at 6:00 PM in the Peter Chase Auditorium at the Plainville Library. The Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools will preview the anticipated budget challenges for the development of next year's budget. This meeting is open to town residents and they're encouraged to attend as well and listen in on, on the presentation. Next item I have is the Financial Dashboard. Next item I have is the Financial Dashboard, which is through November 2019. Has been included in your information packages for this evening's meeting and has been posted on the town website, so I've been told. Okay, that's good. And with your permission, I'd like to ask Scott Colby to summarize the dashboard, and then we'll be prepared, and then talk a little bit about happenings, and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions you may have for us.
So looking at the overall town budget through November 30th, we've spent 43.66% overall, while the general government side is coming in at about 50.85% and the Board of Education at 39.23%, just slightly for all three of those over their two-year averages. Looking at the hauler tonnages for trash, we're coming in at about 253 tons over our two-year average, while the recycling through October 31st, we've received 448 tons, which equates to expenditures at about $39,000. Looking at the police overtime, they're coming in under their two-year average at 53%, while roadways is coming in over their two-year average at 84%. This is due to some of the additional work and town events that they've had this past year. And Buildings and Grounds is coming in at about 109% over their two-year average, which was 85%. Nothing has been spent to date in the roadways or Buildings and Grounds, so no overtime budgets yet. That will show at the next month's dashboard. Moving on to the revenues, for the all revenues and current taxes, they're coming in approximately their two-year average, 50.84% for all revenues and 58.12% for the current taxes. Looking at the unassigned fund balance, we did receive an audited unassigned fund balance that comes in about 15.95%. And as of this current month, we're sitting at about 15%, and that's with the budgeted $300,000 for the fiscal year 20 tax relief. Moving on to special funds, looking at the expenditures and revenues for the Recreation Department, they're coming in right at about their two-year averages. The only item on here that really stands out is the expenditures for the Robertson Airport, and this is due to a project cost within that two-year timeframe that came out during that time. And the Robertson Airport revenues is coming in at about 13%, while the two-year average is 20, and that's just because of when the lease was renewed, it renewed at a lower amount during that time. Other than that, the WPC and the library are coming in roughly around their two-year averages. And moving on to special projects, there were a few minor expenditures in the road bond and the Northwest Drive Rehabilitation Project. There was an expenditure in the amount of $609,000 for the phosphorus removal project and an expenditure for Wheeler School Project at about $1.3 million, and those we'll post in the upcoming month. And the percentages that you see there for those two projects aren't for the completion of the project, but for the contracted budgeted amount. That's all I have to report on the dashboard. I'll move on to the happenings. I just have three happenings from the Plainville Senior Center, and the first one is called Silver Sneaker Chair Aerobics. This is a chair workout for people 65 and older that is paid through health insurance. If your health insurance doesn't offer silver sneakers, you can still attend for $2 per class. This workout focuses on balance, posture, cardio, and strength, and helps keep you active and independent. The Senior Center is offering a free demo on Wednesday, December 18th at 3:15 PM. The weekly class will start in January. If you're not sure if you have silver sneakers through your insurance, call the 1-800 number on the back of your insurance card and ask if your plan covers silver sneakers. If it does, ask for your silver sneakers number, which is a 16-digit number that starts with 2300. And again, if you do not have silver sneakers, you can still attend this course, it's just $2 per class, and there's no need to sign up in advance. And on Wednesday, December 18th at 1:00 PM, they're having a course on staying on your feet in ice and snow. Sometimes there's no way to avoid a fall. This is a free program that teaches you how to fall down the correct way, so that way you don't injure yourself on the snow or ice. And on Thursday, December 19th at 2:30 PM, they're having Intergenerational Jeopardy. The 2020 graduating class of the National Honor Society from Plainville High School will host a free Jeopardy team competition for older adults and students on Thursday, December 19th at the Senior Center. They will set up teams of adults and student participants to play Jeopardy. Come and compete or cheer on the participants and watch the game. When registering, please tell them if you plan to be a contestant or you would like to be an audience member. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Robert's report or Scott's report with our dashboard and the happenings? Okay, thank you both.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on, the next item is our public comment section during this time. We welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. I have one person who has signed up already, but after that, we'll certainly take any other comments for those who have not. First person on the list is John Kislik.
Good evening, town council.
Hello.
Good evening.
Because we're not going to be here, I'll say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you. First thing I have, we had a resident who I think was a really great citizen in town, passed away on December 2nd, Jack Cassidy. So I brought him with me, like I've done with several other of our members that we lost for his last council meeting. Jack was a good friend of our group and I think of the town. The next thing I have is, I'm not a real religious person, but I do believe in prayer. And since Ms. Edman hasn't said the prayer in a long time, I want to say the prayer for this council. Dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the knowledge, the wisdom, the strength, and the courage to perform the elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen. And I also pray that this council never forgets where they came from and who put them up there, who elected you. Thank you. The other thing now, the answer to my freedom of information, I had a three-part question. Two of the financial parts are fine, but what I find, what I think is not very professional, according to the answer, it says the evaluation with the town council was informal with no rating sheets, and I asked for ratings. Now, I can't see how this council would do something like that, that you don't have a document of the evaluation. We have an organizational chart. The top is the people, second is you, and third is our town manager. That's an important position. You know, that should be in his personnel records, how you evaluated, everything. If you want to use that for another job, then go on his resume. I find that really, really unprofessional to not have that in writing, that we can see how the town manager was evaluated. I think you should change that. You used to do it, why you stopped, they have no idea. I'll try to talk fast. One last thing, your three-minute rule. I'm not about to move to Southington, but Southington has five minutes. There used to be an old timer there, must have been at least 70 years old. He had some kind of grievance with the town. Every meeting, he would come up, hand his flag on the podium, and say the same thing over and over and over. And the Southington Town Attorney ruled he has the right to talk the full time. And what I don't understand is why this council still will not change to the five-minute rule. Here you had a person who I'm sure the council didn't like what he said, every meeting after meeting, but they let him do it. And I don't think it's right to change a rule because of several people talking about the same issue time after time after time. So I wish you would consider that again a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? It's your last chance. No. Ms. Edman.
First, I'd like to say that it's not easy being up here, coming here, being up here, and due to a fracture of my lower lumbar.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
But what I have to say is important, so that's why I'm here. Edman, Joel Edman, 63 Hollyberry Lane, overlooking the old Plainville Canal and historic Mule Hall trail path, and overlooking nothing else except for a bunch of trees and wetlands. Greetings to the Plainville Town Council, town manager, and Merry Christmas. With all the turmoil happening in our country, we're having our own turmoil right here in Plainville, or River City, as my sister Joanne sometimes calls it. I hate to sound pessimistic, but I feel the worst is yet to come with the proposed closing of the trail gap that encompasses some of those, some of those wetlands that it has proposed to go through. With the obvious effects of climate change and the imminent threat of global warming all over our entire earth, what are you in the state of Connecticut thinking when you seem to be all for the elongated trail gap encompassing not only the wetlands, but also the majority of disgruntled adjoining landowners that do not want it in their backyards and streets? No rail, no trail, and no thank you. We experienced approximately two inches of rain and a little snowmelt over this past It could possibly have been five or 10 inches of rain, like many other places in the United States and other countries. I hate to think of what that would cost the future taxpayers to clean up and repair to that unnecessary trail. Let's not forget about what is going to happen to our treasured Norton Park that it will slice through. Believe me, the Nortons that graciously donated the 58 acres to the town of Plainville would be totally against it, and it basically states in the original, states an original deed. The people, the people on bicycles and walkers are getting through town just fine on our well-maintained sidewalks and streets, and actually are exposed to more of the commercial activity than just a bicycle shop, a closed restaurant, a funeral home, a couple of churches, an insurance agency that they may encounter for their elongated way through town. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Dave Albert, Hollybeere Lane, 56, sorry about that. I had a question on the leaves that are, can we still drop them off and put them in like a paper bag and drop them off at the town dump or no?
Mr. Lee is going to help me with this. I don't think the transfer station is open right now to have leaf disposal. I believe in the spring it'll open again for that, but I would like him to confirm that for me. Is that the case?
Yes, it's not open on a scheduled basis if somebody wants to bring some leaves down. They just contact my office, we'll try to make arrangements and schedule it at a certain time. That's convenient, but probably not on a weekend. It'd probably be during the week when the crew is, you know, when we can make specific arrangements, but contact my office and we'll try to accommodate as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, otherwise, I have a feeling that they would just end up in the trash and that would be bad, so. The other thing, what piqued my interest here, you had an executive session with Personnel If there's any set legal settlements made or anything like that, where does that show up in the reports?
Would you please?
Any official actions, any motions passed by the council to settle any lawsuits has to be done publicly. So you can discuss it in an executive session, but if any decisions are made, they have to be made publicly at a meeting.
Okay.
Where the public is...
Would that include like personnel?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
All right, perfect, thank you. Last thing I wanted to talk about, that no one has approached, which is the elephant in the room, is this teacher's pension liability, which is 100% taken by the state, but I would point you to page 74 of the town report. It's a massive number. It shows up in the town books as a big zero because the state has agreed to take it over, but you already saw what's going to happen with Malloy last, a few years ago, where politically savvy as he is, why would he attempt to push, begin to push some liability down? Because he knew that that, I read a Yankee Policy Institute schedule, a study, it's like $125 billion, $32,000 per person, not taxpayer, per person. And that's assuming, the number that's in the town report as a footnote is $56 million, but that's, I'm sure there's some investments against it, and it looks like it's somewhere in the area of $19 million the town has exposure, and that's with an 8% actuarial investment rate of return, which is ridiculous. So I don't know. I mean, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, but no one brings it up, but it's there, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Well, again, I'm remiss, that's the word I'm looking for. I've had a bad day today, so bear with me. It's an animal story, ripped the heart right out of you, but I won't go into it. It's really hard tonight to talk. It's the same old, what I come up here every time and say, "I strongly, strongly oppose alignment C and all the negative impacts on the streets and the park, the trail, the Mule Hall Trail, and going forth, I hope in this new year coming up, that all of you up there and our town manager will see to it that it stays on Route 10 where it's already marked and goes straight to Southington. They'll have plenty of pieces of pizza and water bottles to get, and there's no reason why it has to be bothering people's front yards, backyards. It just doesn't make any sense. I don't want to deal with it on Broad Street. And again, like I said the last time, where are the Broad Street people? And we come up here and we fight for the taxpayer, and the taxpayer, what are we up against next year? I hear now we're going to have a budget meeting. What does that mean now? How much is it going to be? Is it going to be $1 million? I doubt it. $2 million, like it was last year? $3 million this year? I don't think that's right, especially when we have a good amount of money in the slush fund or piggy bank. Call it what you may, it's there to help the taxpayer. That's our money. And don't forget, whatever happens in this town, it's the taxpayer's money that makes it, that makes the wheels turn. So I hope that you're going to start talking... So, I, I hope that budget, you're going to start talking about the budget, I hope you keep that in mind when you have your talks, because enough is enough. And please, turn this trail down, keep it up where it's already marked. We already have it. And I too want you to think about five minutes for the people that come up here. After all, we are the taxpayer, we do, we are the important ones in this town, because we provide the fuel that makes the wheels turn. And that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Frangos, apologies.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. I'd like to start off by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday.
And same to you, thank you.
To all. The second thing I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to say thank you to the Public Works for the job they did this year picking up the leaves. It was nice for a change that I had to rush like crazy to keep up with them, and I can't thank them enough. The final thing is just a, listening to the prior discussion, and just some general information for, for myself. When I hear you're going to have a discussion about unassigned fund balance policy, and when I think about policy, that means there's a regimentation to it. What do we have right now, if funds are needed, out of the unfunded balance? How do we, what procedures in place now? Do we need money for this or we need money for that? If we don't have a policy, how do we do it?
Well, the council does have a process. If we have to, if we have to transfer funds from our fund balance to another account in order to cover some sort of shortage or unanticipated expenditure, we have to have a public hearing if it's over a certain amount of money, and then we have to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
That's, that's how we, it's been handled over the many years that I've been doing this.
Okay, just to follow the policy example, an example only, the police needs more money?
I think the policy would specifically, in a document, outline a range of what the council believes should be in our fund balance. For example, it may be a range of 10 to 15% of our total budget should be set aside in that fund. The town, the state of Connecticut has a similar fund, they call it a rainy day fund, it's the same thing. So, we don't have a written document that says this is what the council believes should happen, whereas we should keep this number of dollars set aside in the event that there is something that happens.
Well, maybe it's, thank you, and maybe this is the way I'm presenting it, I'm looking at it not what the balance would be, it's how you access the balance. That's the question, it doesn't seem there, maybe I'm, you know, I don't know enough about.
It can change, you know, depending on the end of our year-end, for example.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, that can vary, it's not always the same, as you know, because you look at those reports every month.
Yes, I do.
So, I don't know, Mr. Lee, do you have something to embellish on that?
The, the access to the, to the balance, if it's outside of the budget, is, is detailed, the procedure for that is detailed in the town charter. The policy would speak to, would speak to what the council's preferences would be for how to use a fund balance if it exceeded the goals that were, that were set in place, that in general it should be used for, there may be a variety of reasons to use it. Usually it's related to one-time expenditures, you know, because it's, because fund balance is usually considered one-time revenues. So it would detail, you know, perhaps, some towns have said that if you're, let's say they had a 12% goal and they were at 13%, their recommendation may include taking at excess that 1% and putting it into capital projects, for example, or a capital and not recurring fund, so that, you know, so that's giving detail. Other towns may say, well, if you, another option may be if you have in excess of 12%, you should put it into your debt management fund. So there's a, so there's a statement that says if you're over a certain threshold that you previously established, these are the things, these are the things that you should most likely use that fund balance towards, and in order to do that, you'd have to, you'd have to go through the budgetary process or the town charter process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments, I will close that portion of our agenda and move We do not have any items under our old business section, but we do have a few items under new business, so I will look for a motion for item number one, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with SMA Realty LLC regarding 10 Spark Street as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair, that's just, it's a revised addendum.
Oh, it is revised?
Yes.
Okay, I revise my motion.
Okay.
To say revised addendum.
Second.
We try to keep as current as possible, after five minutes before the meeting.
Thanks, Christopher.
Any other changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there anything else? Does not look as to be. Other discussions of interest, Mr. Lee, have you got anything else?
I have nothing to.
All right. I would like to take a moment to wish everybody a half Merry Christmas, greetings of the holiday season, and a healthy prosperous new year, because when we come back, it'll be next year, so, best to all. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.